Thank you all for being here this evening. We're going to conduct some commission interviews. And the first people we have to interview will be the Human Services Commission. Thank you very much for volunteering. So what we'll do is we'll ask you to come to the podium, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then the council will ask you some questions. And the first person we're going to ask to come to the podium is Ashley Byrd. Thank you. Go right ahead. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Let's spend a couple of minutes telling us all about yourself, who you are, and we'll move from there.
Sorry. All right. Hi. My name is Ashley Byrd, and I am currently Director of Education at Urban League in Metropolitan Seattle. I have been in the human services field for over 15 years, serving youth and families in King County, and I came here from Texas about five years ago, but I've lived here since I was about 16 years old. I came back, and I currently am supporting students in the Taquilla School District and the Seattle Schools, Seattle Public Schools District as well. But I also work within Urban League, supporting a lot of human services types of projects, including advocacy, public health initiatives, housing initiatives, and just really serving underserved communities and Black and Brown communities that are in need of resources to empower them for, you know, long-term self-sufficiency.
Well, thank you very much, Ashley. Counsel, do we have some questions? Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, I have two questions.
Yes.
I don't quite understand what Director of Education actually does.
Okay.
If you could explain it a little bit better. And then talk to me about how you work with budgets and how you make decisions on where the money gets moved around to.
Absolutely. So as a Director of Education, I am over all education programs within the schools that we're in, the Seattle Public Schools, which is Rainier Beach High School, Franklin High School, Garfield High School, Roosevelt High School, and then we're also in Foster High School. So I oversee all college and career readiness programs for all students. And we also have an Urban Scholars Program where we service, you know, underserved, first-generation students that are in need of case management services to ensure that they graduate and have continued educational opportunities and access, you know, beyond high school. And as far as budgets, most of my day is around budgets, honestly, because, as you know, as a nonprofit, we are funded by grants, and a lot of our grants are federal grants. So those, you know, money is very strict, and we have to really spend it accordingly to make sure that we're in compliance with those. So I currently oversee about $5 million worth of grants out of my program from, you know, private and public funds. And with that, you know, there's tons of documentation and, you know, accounting for budgets, and I also work on grants as well. Many of the grants that I'm overseeing currently, I was a part of the RFP process in applying for them from start to finish. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I see. We have Councilmember McDaniel.
Yes, I thank you for coming out tonight. One of my questions can be the same thing. It's gonna be, well, change a little bit. It's gonna be on voting. If you had five different organizations that were all coming for funding, and then we found out the funding was gonna be cut a little bit short, would you decrease each one equally, or would you focus on trying to support the four and letting one go?
Man, that's a difficult question.
Oh, it's really difficult.
I honestly would just look at historical data of impact that it has had in the community and try to see how we can best serve all of those communities, all of them, as equitably as possible, because they might not be able to be equal. You know, if we have a community that is servicing 500 people versus one that's servicing 20, you know, we might be able to balance those funds more appropriately to uphold those 500 that they're still serving and try to let them know, like, hey, as funds become available, we'll try to, you know, redistribute it. But I would do my best to, like, not have to take away all funding from the one.
I like your answer. Second part's gonna be kind of like that. We, I've sat through the human services, when they've done their voting and stuff like that. One of the things I noticed is a lot of the nonprofits are actually located in Bellevue or other locations. Do you think it would be important to try to have the organizations or fund the organizations that are centrally located in Federway and not corporately located in, like, a Bellevue location?
Absolutely. Because if we are, you know, trying to service Federway community, it's nice to keep those funds in-house, you know? Because if they're traveling all the way to Bellevue and they need services, we're already creating barriers for them by doing so. So trying to invest within the community as much as possible is the most equitable use of the funds.
Thank you. Thank you for showing up.
Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah. Question. With you working professionally for the Urban League, the Urban League interacts a lot with some of the different nonprofits that you may be making decisions about on funding. You know, my question is, is it seems like there could be a concern on any biases since you are, you know, with your employer and their, and your employer's interactions with some of those other nonprofits.
I mean, I could definitely understand your concern in that regard, you know, because even when we try not to, there, you know, could be those biases that arise. But for me, I would always try to check myself at the door and just make sure that I'm not the primary decision-maker in anything where it seems like I'm of conflict, and I would make my conflict aware, like, hey, I might know this person, you know? Let's make sure that, you know, someone else is, you know, giving feedback in on this as well, because I don't want it to come back on me to look as though I'm showing favoritism. But I do a really good job of balancing, because at the end of the day, all the things that I'm focused on is service in the community, not organizations. I'm here to serve the people that need these services and less about the organizations.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Councilmember Honda has a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, thank you for applying. My question is kind of similar to Councilmember Walsh. So as a commissioner, what would you do to ensure equal access to the commission from different groups of people in the community?
Okay. Let me make sure I understand the question. What?
What would you do?
Uh-huh.
To make sure that every group in the community have equal access to you and to the commission?
In regards to funding or in regards to, like, just my decision-making?
Um, all of the above.
Okay. Um, I don't know. For me, I'm a very transparent person, and I'm a very direct person, so I feel that I would make myself readily available to people as much as possible, you know, professionally and equitably as possible, within my means. You know, I feel like stepping into a role like this, it would definitely have to shape me more professionally, help me to grow, and help me to create better boundaries professionally and personally. So I would just do my best to balance those both.
All right. Thank you.
Did you? Okay. Thank you. I think we're through with our questions. Ashley, thank you very much for stepping forward. We'll be making a decision at, right at the end of our meeting this evening, and then we will be appointing at the council meeting, which begins at 6:30. You're welcome to stay to hear what happens. It's all public. Or you can dial in on Channel 21, or staff will call tomorrow. Anything you like. So thank you very much for stepping forward. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Have a great evening.
So just so you know, we have nine positions on the Human Services Commission. Two of the positions are currently vacant, and then we have three alternate positions. All three alternate positions are vacant. So we will be looking at two voting members this evening and three alternates. Now, two of the folks that are new that have applied, Ashley was a new one, new person to apply, and the second new person to apply was Mr. Booker, Harold Booker, who wasn't capable of being here this evening, but he will be, we will be interviewing him on November the 18th. So now, we are going to ask Donna Arnold to speak from where you are with your microphone. Appreciate that very much. And go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself, a couple of minutes, and then we'll ask you questions, Donna. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is that working?
Yes.
Okay. So Donna Arnold, I currently sit on the Human Services and Diversity Committee, and I worked at Boeing for 38 years in purchasing and employee involvement, and then I worked for six years at the Washington State Fair as Director of Transportation and Parking. And for fun, my husband and I have a paranormal investigation team.
Whoa. Interesting.
So, yeah. That's fine.
Oh, tell us some more.
Oh.
We've got another couple of minutes here.
Oh, well, I rescue cats. That's a big deal for me. They're usually the cats that won't get adopted, like, they have disabilities, or they're the wrong color, or what, whatever. And so I take them in. I don't, I'm kind of a boring person.
And you've lived in Federway for how long?
For 30, about 30 years.
That's long. My goodness.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Long time.
Thank you. The Human Services Commission is a very hard-working commission, and so you're you're not any problem with?
Oh, no.
Being involved, yeah.
No, I'm retired, so I have time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, let's see. Let's start from this end. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So thank you for reapplying for the commission. After serving a year or so on the commission, would you do anything differently on the commission? Would you see the commission doing anything differently?
I think one of the things that we're gonna try and do is work with some of the other committees, and we've already contacted a couple of them, and there's a couple more that I'm on their agenda for, because I think that there's some overlap maybe that we could benefit from. So I would like to encourage more of that, for sure.
Do you think a meeting with all commissioners would be?
Yes.
A good idea?
Yes. I think that would be great, to have, like, a big, a big meeting, like, either once a year or biannually, or, you know, just to get together and see if there's some opportunities there to work, you know, together on some same projects.
Well, thank you. Thanks for reapplying.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Good evening.
Hello.
I enjoy you on the Diversity Commission, by the way. You bring some insight that's quite interesting. So with that said, you have a choice between Human Services and Diversity. Which one do you feel is the one that you would have to choose if you had to go one or the other?
Oh, gosh.
I know. I don't get these questions.
That would be so difficult.
I'm gonna even ask you for the why factor, too.
Maybe human services, because I've learned so much about the opportunities within the city that are available to people that I had no idea, and I can see that there's probably a lot more to do. And so I think I still have something to give for that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good thing you don't have to make a choice.
I know.
Councilmember Doby.
Yeah. I want to ask a follow-up question on what you said. You said that you thought that the different commissions should get together and share more information or work together. How do you see that happening? I mean, how do you, most commissions don't have the synergies between them, like land use and human services, or maybe diversity and another one. I mean, can you elaborate on what you're seeing and why you make that statement?
Well, if we stay within the city, our own city, and the different committees and commissioners, I don't think it'd be that difficult, because, like I said, I'm visiting two more in the future, and I've visited one already. And I think it's something that's gonna be acceptable for everyone. They're kind of excited about it. So I don't see it as an issue to bring everybody together. I think they want that.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's an issue. I'm just trying to understand.
Logistics.
The outcome.
Okay.
What your, how it would be better for everybody, what you think we would, as a city, how we would benefit, or what things we could do more creatively.
Well, I think the first step would be to do, like, a think tank or a brainstorming exercise, and then, you know, kind of go from there and kind of flesh out what we think we could do together. I did employee involvement for so long, I'm into that sort of thing, so.
Hey, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah. So what other commissions have you visited, and which ones do you think would have the most interaction with the Human Services Commission?
Well, the diversity, for sure. We talked to, since I'm on both, it was kind of easy for me to make that bridge. And I'm on the agenda for the seniors committee, and then, yeah, and some of the others, too, the arts and commissions. I'm in their agenda for next month. So we're gonna kind of just go one by one and see who's interested in working on one project together, or maybe several, however we can overlap.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Doc, nobody asked about paranormal. Are you, I'm not gonna ask about it either, but does that include UFOs or just paranormal?
Paranormal, whatever. But that can include UFOs.
Oh, interesting. Gosh darn.
Yeah.
We need a committee.
Do you listen to Art Bell at night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm wearing time. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. You're currently in position four, correct?
Yes.
For the human services. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I see he's coming for your microphone. Is that right? Okay. Thank you very much. It's the same, we'll have, we'll discuss at the end of this meeting who will, who we think will appoint, and then the appointments will take place at the regular council meeting. So you're welcome to stay, or tune in on Channel 21, or have staff call, whatever. Thank you for your involvement. You've been very, very involved. Thank you. All right. Now, finally, we have Betty Taylor. Betty, can you come to the microphone, or? There you are. And Betty currently is in position, oh, yeah, Donna was in position seven, and Betty is in position eight currently. Tell us about yourself, Betty.
Okay. My name is Betty Taylor. I've been a community member for the city of Federway over 20 years. I'm really an advocate in the community. Worked on several projects with community members, worked on projects with Susan Honda, Claire Wilson, and other people, been involved in so much. In regarding to activities, I do enjoy being on the Human Service Commission. Matter of fact, I love it. I just love it. I just love it. I love what we do. I love the heart. We have a heart for people. Collaboration, discussions, I just love it. Coming together, making decisions together, even making hard decisions together. I believe, and I'm gonna say this, that I believe that we are the hardest-working commission in Federway. I have to say that, because we work hard. We work on, we make very hard decisions, as far as, like, deciding, like, working on reading applications, making sure that the applications have everything that we need in order for us to make a logical decision on who gets the grant and who doesn't, staying awake all night long, not getting no sleep, working on tons and tons and tons and tons of applications, and I just love it. I love it.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you. Counsel, well, we have Councilmember McDaniel.
Yeah. Good evening, Betty. If, you've been through the process more than once, so is there anything that you would change in the current application process and voting process?
In the application process, would I change anything? It's been the same. I mean, I, as far as the application process, everybody is treated the same. No one's treated differently. You know, everybody has the same, everybody, you ask one question for, one question, everybody gets the same question. So nothing's changed, and I can work with that. I don't have no problem with that, not at all.
That's an answer.
As long as we get our job done.
Councilmember Honda.
Thanks, Betty. Thanks for reapplying. After your time on the Human Services Commission, can you tell us if there's anything that you would see the commission doing differently, or in addition to what you do?
Being, there's a word, what word? Sustainability is important, and we've had a lot of changes with the Human Service Commission. We've had people leave and people come, and we have, people come and they stay for a short while, and then they leave, and when they do that, it leaves a hole, and it leaves a void. And so trying to get that void back, or trying to replace what was there but is not there, is difficult, but we, as a team, we work together, and we make things happen. So you can't drop the ball because of one person, but you have to keep, pick up the ball and keep going, because nonprofits are counting on it. I mean, we have a responsibility to the public, we have a responsibility to the council, we have a responsibility to each other, and we need to, we're here to fulfill a mission. And so, yeah, stability, just consistency is really important, and making sure that people are in the right fit, the right fit, that's important, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Doby.
I just have one quick question, Betty, and I thank you for all the years you've been on this. We get calls, or at least I do every now and then, from organizations that didn't even know we had a funding mechanism in human services. Do you have any ideas how we get the information out to more nonprofits so they can at least compete for the money?
You know, that's a really good question, and that question comes up a lot. You know, when different funding comes a little, we have people come and say, well, we didn't know that this money is available. How are you gonna get the works to us? And so it's through a lift serve. We do have a way that we can get the information out to those that don't have the information, even on the website. You know, we'll put something on the website, not me, but the staff, you know? Yeah, they will make sure that it gets on the website. And so they, yeah, they make sure that it's out, so for even those that say that we didn't know, we didn't hear, it's basically on the website. So it's public information, nothing hiding, nothing lacking, it's there for the public, and we even have, whereas if, you know, as far as, like, even how to fill out the application, the steps to do that, we even, we even offer that to the nonprofits. If they need help, ask for help. We're there to help.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Council President. I'm sorry I called you Chair earlier, so my apologies.
I called you by your first name, so we're good.
Patty, I actually don't have any questions for you. But I just want to say thank you for all the time that you, you know, spent on the commission. You are a very active member of the community, and your service is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Betty. And you know that we'll talk about this at the end of the meeting and then appoint at the regular meeting, so. Well, that concludes our, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Walsh.
Actually, I was just gonna second what Councilmember Tran just said about, Betty, thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you. And I think that goes for all of us, Betty. Thank you for your involvement for many, many years. Thank you. So that concludes our interview for the Human Services Commission. Now, we're going to move on to interviewing for the Arts Commission. We have nine members of the Arts Commission and two alternates. We received four applications, Alexander Milston, Daniel Hirschman, Katie Ashton, and Angelisa Barrez. Four current members are seeking reappointment, Kim Bowman, Kenny Byrne, Karen Brigado, and Tom Bristle. Tom Bristle is a current alternate. So Karen Brigado was interested in serving, however, she couldn't be here this evening, so we will be scheduling her to be interviewed on November 18th. So the first person we're going to interview this evening is Katie Ashton. Would you come to the, I'm saying that wrong, so please say your name correctly. Thank you. Tell us a little bit about yourself, and, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So my name is Katie Ashton, and Federway is my hometown. I recently graduated from Washington State University in May of 2024 with a degree in Political Science Pre-Law, as well as minors in Psychology and Philosophy. And then I went and I started law school at Gonzaga last fall, in which I am now seeking to transfer to Seattle U's online program. So I'm looking at having ample amount of time that I'd like to rededicate to the community in which I grew up in. I may not necessarily call myself an artist, but I enjoy fiber arts a lot. Currently, I was crocheting a bag over there, and I also really enjoy performance arts. I was a performer for about seven years in band, orchestra, and choir, all varying lengths, and so I find the arts extremely important, especially here in Federway, and as we're getting into a time of economic uncertainty, I think public art is extremely important, especially for social well-being. And so I'd really like to advocate for making public art more accessible, as well as bringing more awareness to the public art that we currently have. So that's something that I find extremely important, and I hope to be able to dedicate more time towards that in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Tran.
Thank you. Katie, I think I know you for quite some time when you were working with Councilmember Honda, when you were in high school. And thank you for applying. Welcome back to Federway.
Thank you.
You mentioned that you graduated from Wazoo, so just so you know, I'm gonna take some point off of that, because I'm a husky, so I'm just kidding. But anyway, thank you for applying.
Of course. I'm definitely really excited that I was able to apply this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, you made the comment, public art should be more available, I think I heard you say.
Yeah.
Well, what does that, what does that mean?
Yeah, absolutely. So I envision for our public art is making it more accessible for the community, just in sense of being able to enjoy it, whether that's bringing more awareness to the public art, such as the Wind Fund we just created, making that stuff more aware of the community, as well as, like, the facility for the Maintenance and Operations Yard, there's gonna be public art there. So trying to bring more awareness to individuals that we're having these public art opportunities, as well as having more community-led projects, so we can invite the community to express their diverse feelings, emotions, and kind of be able to put art into their own lives. So that's kind of what I'd like to see in terms of kind of more public art.
And just a follow-up, how would you do that?
How would I do that? So I previously have done work in different organizations, such as, like, as a social media manager, for, if you're reading this, which is a mental health organization, as well as the John Quincy Adams Society, those are two different ones, where I was a social media manager. And so my big job was putting out there that we were having these different events going on, having these different things happening, and I think I can take my skills of graphic design and making those posts to bring that to the table, to really share with our community what's going on. Because I feel like there's a lot out there that a lot of people aren't able to find or able to, you know, they don't know where it is. And with everything going on in the economy right now, families are gonna need more opportunities to enjoy things, like the public arts, and I'd like to even see, like, a public art walk as something that we can introduce in the future, and so I think that'd be a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Let's see. Well, Councilmember Walsh, staying on that side of the table.
All right. So Katie, you've been pretty involved with the community the last, last little while, anyway, and I think that you're pretty aware of the things the Arts Commission has done. What do you think the Arts Commission has done that is, that is good, and what do you think the Arts Commission needs to do to improve?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of my favorite things about the Arts Commission is just how adamant they are about the community, such as being able to get access for different performing groups and putting them in the Performing Arts Center, as well as hosting our arts exhibitions. However, I'd like to see better record of the current public art that we have, so that we can have better tracking of what's going on with it, as well as maintenance. I think my favorite program that they do is gonna be the traffic graphics. It's definitely changed a lot in Federway, and I was actually there the first meeting that they introduced it. I was, like, in sixth grade, and I remember that. And from my understanding, we've only had one graphic actually be graffitied, and I think implementing more stuff like that can really help make Federway a more beautiful place and a more enjoyable place for families and other people.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Sadly, two Councilmembers down there took my best questions, so I'll go to my default. What's your favorite book and why?
Can you say that one more time?
What's your favorite book and why? I usually hold that for the youth commission, but since my best questions were taken, I'm I usually hold that for the youth commission, but since my best questions were taken, I'm curious to know.
That is a really challenging question. I really like Fitzgerald, and so I want to say like The Jazz Age or something like that, but I'd have to say Turtles All the Way Down by John Green.
What is it one more time?
Turtles All the Way Down by John Green.
Interesting.
It's a really good book. He kind of did the history crash courses, if you ever saw those online.
And why, though?
So that book, it kind of dives into mental health stigma, specifically talking about anxiety and OCD. And I think when I read that as a kid, it was very eye-opening, and it's something that I think others should read. It's very enlightening, especially for mental health awareness.
All right, interesting. Thank you very much.
And we have Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Councilmember Tran is referring to a program we had, I think, seven years ago, in which we invited high school students to, to work with a council member and council members mentored a high school student. We did it for one year. It was a great program. I hope that we can get back to doing that again. And Katie was actually my mentee, and I learned a lot from her. So out of the six students we had, only two completed our program, and she was one of them. And so she learned a lot about the city because our staff took her around and they learned every department. And I learned a lot from her because of that, so thanks for applying.
Thank you, Councilmember Honda. All right, so we're, we're at the end of our, I have one quick question, has nothing to do with the commission. So Seattle U has online classes now for?
Yeah, so Seattle U's online class for that law school is like one of the few ABA-approved programs. And so I'm really excited to start because what they offer is it's only five weekends a semester that you go in-person to class, so.
And do you still have to pay full fare?
Yeah.
Oh, that's terrible.
Yeah, it's law school, unfortunately, but that's why I got to get scholarships, the transferring.
Right. Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you, Katie. As I said before, we'll, we'll make a decision at the end of the meeting and then.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Katie. Take care. Thank you for applying, appreciate it. All right, the next person is Daniel Hirschman. Is Daniel here?
Yep.
Hi. Come on down.
I'm Daniel Hirschman. I've lived here in this community since 1968. When my family moved here, when I was 12 years old, I went to Federal Way Public Schools and graduated from Thomas Jefferson, where I had the opportunity to work with some very fine music teachers, Don Barrows and Roland Schonzenbach, who would be very important figures later in my life. I went to Western and got a bachelor's degree in music education. And then in 1979, I came back to the community to teach in the Federal Way Public Schools in instrumental music. I taught in Federal Way from 1979 until I retired in 2015. Later in my career, I picked up visual arts, photography and video production as well. Along the way, I raised my family here, my son, and I got a PhD in music at the University of Washington. Hope that isn't bad news, but yeah, did that. When I retired in 2015, I decided to try to return service to the community or keep doing that. So I applied for the Arts Commission in 2015. And much to my surprise, the commissioners decided to make me chair for five years. So that was an interesting perspective. It was a very hands-on learning experience for me. My main guiding principle throughout my tenure for five years with the commission was to use my experience and connections with the education community in Federal Way and build a bridge between, well, City Hall and the district across the street, which wasn't always as easy as, as you might think, despite the proximity. I was a big advocate of getting our kids here involved in the arts in Federal Way. And I had regular meetings with principals and the superintendent. And one of the products I noticed when I walked in the door down here was the Scholar Art in the City display, which you have down there, which was a direct result of my meetings with the superintendent. Art displays went up around the city in various businesses and locations, and I'm kind of proud of that. And as a result of those meetings, the district also hired a fine arts coordinator to manage that program. So COVID came in 2020 and life got kind of complicated, so I took a bit of a sabbatical. But I'm still a part of the community and I would like to offer my experience and talents again. I played with the Federal Way Symphony for 25 years, and I also was on their board for 20 years. And so I've got a lot of deep roots in this community and would be glad to help again.
Thank you very much, Dan. Don Barrows was a friend, and I think he passed away, isn't that correct, a little while ago?
Yes, it's been a number of years now, as well as, as well as Laird Thornton, too, unfortunately. He was a colleague of mine that I treasured very much.
Thank you. They're wonderful guys. Hey, you know, when you, when you made chair, that's when you get up to use the restroom, that's when they always make you chair. Watch that one. Okay, do we have any questions for Dan? Councilmember Dovi.
I just have a clarifying question. Which schools did you teach at here in Federal Way?
I taught everywhere. I was hired on in instrumental music education in 1979. I believe Nancy Ice was probably the instrumental school board member in getting that program.
I know Nancy.
Up and going in 1979, when the state budgets and levies started passing finally again. So I, I had four elementary schools and they shifted around, but I was at Valhalla and Sunny Crest and Wildwood and Panther Lake and Twin Lakes and, let's see, it'd be easier to name the ones I wasn't at. I ended my career at Todd Beamer High School, where I taught from 2003 to 2015.
Thank you.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Do you think that we promote arts in our school district enough? And if, if we don't, what could we do to promote arts more? All kinds of arts.
I think the promotion is just communicating and taking the time to talk with people. When I first joined the commission in 2015, a lot of the commissioners had ideas about getting kids into projects like the traffic graphics program, but didn't really know how to deal with literally the bureaucracy of education. So I was able to negotiate that, that way. So I think the communication is just, you know, people talking to one another. And what I offered the commission was the knowledge and experience and personal connections with, with young, with the people in the district to be able to unlock some things. I would also mention the traffic graphics, one of the programs that Gary Gillespie was a promoter of. And I was able to coordinate a program so that we had a high school graphic design competition to get, get student artwork on one of the traffic graphics. And it took a while, but we got, the first one was the starring, the stars and moon at 320th and across the street from the Safeway there, which is a very beautiful one, in my opinion. It was a student design from Decatur High School.
And then the one in front of Decatur's student design, yeah. Thank you so much.
No other questions? Councilmember Walsh.
I, I'd had it on, but you, in your last response, you answered my question, so thank you, without me having to ask it.
I'm just curious, can you just off the top of your, rather than saying what, just wondering which school did you not enjoy the most, did you think was the best-run school in the history, in your estimation? I'm just curious.
The best-run schools.
Or the, the one that you would want your children to go to?
Well, I, my son went, I had my son go to Green Gables, which I thought at the time had a wonderful program in terms of its approach to students. They had classes at that time that were grades one, two, and three, so they had the same teacher, and then grades four, five, and six, so they had the same teacher. So I had my son go there and he did very well. He was kind of a square peg in a round hole because he was so, in many ways academically advanced, but he had, he had, being a premature young man, he had a boy at that time, he had some developmental issues that needed to be taken into account. So that turned out to be a wonderful place for him for all those, for all those years. I, I loved teaching at Lucota during the mid-'90s. And when I taught there, there were people there who had been teaching since the school opened in the 1960s there. That, that's, in these days, that's really unusual when you have a staff that literally spends their, loves the school and the work that they do so much, they spend their entire, entire career there.
Thank you.
So I could go on too long, I'm sure.
I was just curious. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that very much. So we'll, we'll talk about this at the end of the meeting and then we'll appoint at the council meeting at 6:30.
Okay, thank you. Could I just make one comment? I, I loved what I heard about the traffic graphics. I, I coined that term with Gary Gillespie. He called them utility box murals, and I said, that's just too, that's just too whatever. But they really are, they are precious in the community and I enjoy seeing them every time, so thank you very much for that comment, I appreciate that.
Cool. Well, thank you very much, Dan. Thank you. All right, so now we're right on schedule. Five minutes behind maybe, 5:42?
One minute's behind.
Yeah, okay. Next, Angelica Juarez. Hi, thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. Well, I've never been part of any commission. I've been living here in Federal Way for eight years. And I've been part of the art gallery program this year. And I met Kathy and Kevin, and I was in the large, in the very last art commission interview and meeting, talking about all that. And I was like, wow, this is pretty nice, I would like to learn more, I would like to be more involved. I'm a painter, I've been painting since I'm eight years old. But I never thought I would be having an interview right here with all of you and everybody with a lot of experience in the arts and all that, and I'm just part of the community. If I'm considered, I will be very happy. I will be giving my time and I would like to learn. I think there's a lot of stuff that we can do in Federal Way to have more art. I've been in different cities and art exhibitions and I have great ideas. I think art is very important, as Katie said, and, and I think we should be a little bit more involved, have more people, not just local artists here, like have people from other cities coming here, because they bring more people. And that way, when they think about Federal Way, they can think about art too, you know, not just the Bad News or just the bonsai garden, you know, like more art in the city. That would be great, you know? Invite all young people to come and be part of it and be proud of it. But again, I don't, I was a community manager for many years, I've been working since I'm 12. I've been doing a lot of different stuff. Currently, I have a roofing company with my husband. We're local here, so all this is new for me. But thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting to be this formal. I would get more prepared.
You were fine. Thank you very much, Angelica. We, we only, I just want to mention that we only have three positions opening, and boy, we had seven people apply for the Arts Commission, that's pretty.
That's great.
Pretty, pretty popular commission. So Councilmember McDaniel, you have a question for Angelica?
Yeah, you had mentioned that you, did you get involved or you went to the Art Explosion? Was that what the, the event you went to?
Yes, one of my paintings were chosen to be part of it, of it, and then I all was on the Nutsden Theater for like four months, I have all my pieces right there.
Oh.
And right now, I'm going to be part of the ceremony that we're going to have for the Arts Alive. So I've been part of the art.
So my question is, earlier today, we had talked about how we could do better outreach or get better communications with certain things on different commissions and committees. Did you feel, since someone reached out to you, did you feel it was easy to find the art community in Federal Way, or was it a little bit more difficult and you just happened to have someone find you and pull you in?
Honestly, as an artist, it wasn't easy. It wasn't right there for you to see it and be like, oh, I'm going to be part of it. Like, could be on the website, but you have to actually go and look into the art commission's website to see what's going on. It's not like you see it anywhere, or you see it on a Facebook pop-up or, or Instagram or anything like that. For me, I had to be looking and reaching out in order to, to see what was going on or what was the program about. And then Kathy told me more about it, you know, like, oh, we have this going on, you should apply, we have these other things, you should apply. But it's not really out there for us to see it right away. So I thought maybe, you know, if I could be part of the art commission, I can give my input as an artist, you know, to see how we see it differently than people organizing things out there.
Could you share one of your ideas you might have to get a better presentation for the arts in the community? Is there something you could think of at the top? You had like, if you had done this, it would, I would have known about it, or I think it would have been a great idea to get more public awareness about it?
Well, now we have those emails coming out from the Federal Way City where it shows everything was going on, you know, like the mayor was here, was having breakfast over here, or things like that. I think they should do more flyers for schools to, to share, you know? Some like, like grocery stores, the people go there, have a little flyer up there. We don't have really a downtown here in Federal Way where people just go and have coffee, and we don't have it unfortunately yet, I think it's in the process. But I, I think that, that we need to have more, more flyers, old-fashioned, you know? There, like, there's the golf course, we can do, I don't know, an event over there that we can let other people know and invite more people to come and be part of it. So that's something more nicer here. I think arts is very important.
I think you nailed it, the school and then the groceries. We have some very unique grocery stores that are very tailored, that if you got in front of them, it's a whole different community we could talk to. I like your ideas. Thank you. Thanks for showing up, too.
Thank you. So Councilmember Walsh.
You're a painter, what is your medium?
Oil.
Oil, okay.
I try watercolors and, but mine is oil. I, yeah.
All right, sounds great. And I, it, it sounds like habla española, sí?
Yes.
Sí, bueno. I would imagine that, that that could help, there's a lot, the Hispanic community in Federal Way is very large, and I'd imagine there's a lot of potential for getting them more involved with the arts.
There is a lot of artists, like, I was part of the City of Everett first Latino art exhibition from Letty, I don't know if you guys know, Letty is like a nonprofit, give like classes and teach all Latinos Hispanic like computer, computers and English and stuff like that. And in two weeks, they put together an event, and it was a nonprofit, so they didn't have any budget for it. And the same community of Latino artists, not just Everett, like everywhere they invited, they put everything together and it was really nice. So I think if we invite more people, not just the Latino, right, but everybody as a community, we can come up with a great ideas for art.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Angelica, thank you. We'll, we'll discuss this at the end of the meeting and then appoint at the regular meeting following this.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Okay, Alexander Milston? Go ahead, please.
Hello. I'm Alex and I'm, I've been Federal Way my whole life, I was born and I'm Alex and I'm, I've been Federal Way my whole life. I was born here. That's where I was raised. I, I graduated from Highline College in 2023 with a, so doing running start. So I got an associate's and my high school diploma there. And I was studying computer science at Central Washington University. However, I've since switched course more towards trying to get apprenticeship in ironworking with the local 86s. So yeah, it's a little about like myself. In terms of art, I've had the great experience of meeting many, many people within Federal Way over our last like few years, including like several artists I'm really like close friends with. And seeing their art, art is like beautiful. And art is just something I'm really passionate about and passionate about seeing, especially in like public places. I've been kind of going around some of the nearby cities a lot. And it's been great seeing the different ways art is done around like this area and kind of seeing some of the differences like city by city. And yeah, yeah, especially with terms of like public art and whatnot. And yeah, public art is something I'm really like passionate about as well. Especially like allowing members of the community to create their like own art within Federal Way. Like allowing, something I would like to do on the commission would be allowing avenues for local artists to be able to request like areas where they can put like public art. That's, I think that would be like really cool and stuff. And yeah, that's like a little about me.
Thank you very much, Alex. So Councilmember McDaniel, do you have a question?
Yeah, my, my question is gonna be, I see you around town. I know you, a little bit of social butterfly you get out and about. I do like your comment about how art is an expression of ourselves. Is there any other commissions that you'd also be interested in? Just knowing that we have a tight number on this one, just in case. Is there anything else that would bring up your interest or is art's the only thing that really fits you right now?
Arts was the one that spoke out to me the most. However, I, there are other like services that I've looked at. Arts was the one that I was definitely the most interested in. But hu- human services seems, is a very important commission. That's how I could like best describe it. It's one of the most important, hardworking ones. That Diversity Commission as well are, are really interesting as well.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Doby.
Yeah, quick question. You mentioned that you were doing computer science, I think you said, and running start. And you've changed and you're gonna work in the ironwork business?
Yeah.
Like the guys who walk up on the girders? What, what's your time gonna look like? I mean, are you in the union now and, or are you going through the apprenticeship? Or how much time are you actually gonna have?
Yeah, so right, so for the apprenticeship, I'm kind of in like the pre-apprenticeship stage, trying to apply for it with evaluation. So a lot of that's training, going to like the regular trainings they have for carrying. Carrying rebar is kind of the primary thing that they test for. Are you able to carry 90 pounds of rebar back and forth many, many times? That's a,
A lot of times.
Yeah. So it's a lot of strength training is what I'm working on right now. That tying, tying of steel wire around rebar as well is another thing practicing. But right now it's primarily strength, strength training until the next evaluation, which is gonna be sometime in late January.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Alex. Well,
Yeah, I was just gonna say with that, the Arts Commission meets during the day.
Yeah.
And so, so you don't think that'd be a problem for you?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Alex, very much. Thank you. All right. Well, our next person to interview this evening is Tom Bristol.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm Tom Bristol. I've been on the Arts Commission as an alternate since February, when I came here the first time. Originally born and raised from Montana. I moved to the Puget Sound about a little over 10 years ago and then moved down to Federal Way just about a year and a half ago. So far, my experience has been awesome. I love the city and the heart that it has. It's my favorite part of it. Super encouraged to see the young folks and people here talking about commission mixers and all the ideas. So anyway, lots of good feelings coming out of me tonight. Being on the commission this year was an exciting, you know, opportunity to just sort of get involved and see the function of it and how the meetings went. And I was involved with the Arts Explosion and helped to work on some of the, the grant process for applications for applying for arts grants. And some of the, we did interviews and I think tonight we've got recommendations for funding as well. So yeah, I think I'll leave it at that, but I'm happy to take questions. It's been a really great year so far and I'm super encouraged.
Thank you, Tom. Councilmember McDaniel.
Yeah, good to see you, Tom. My question is, since you've been an alternate for last year, being able to watch kind of from the sidelines to an extent, I'm assuming we're looking at trying to step you maybe up into a voting position. So with that said, is there anything that you would change in the current way that the commission's done? Or any of the projects that you've, you've kind of overwatched over the last year? Is there anything you would shift up or change?
Yeah, so I have experience, you know, working as a creative director in corporate marketing settings. And I've had that experience of running teams of, you know, 12 to 20 plus people. And I just think some of those operational components to a commission, I think there's huge potential. You know, even though we have maybe even limited seats, you know, the public can still be part of the conversation all the time. And so I just think operationalizing it and to the full potential is one of the things I'd love to see us grow into next year. And then I also just think that continuing to do the things we already do and just improving and doing it better is a great way to garner trust with, you know, the commission as well as the council and the city. And so I think for next year, the goal is to really just kind of do the things we've, we've been doing better and also to really connect with people young and old and veterans of the community as well as new members as to how arts, you know, is active in Federal Way.
My last question is then, with, if we keep, like you said, and we focus on what we're currently doing, do you think there's still quite a bit of expansion or capability of growing the current events that we have, like the explosion and other events?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we had double the entries for Arts Explosion this year and the same amount of space. So there was a bit of like, you know, how do we get it all in there and, and make it run? And so that's been the exciting part is I, I see that the community is becoming aware when you do these events on repeat. And then I just think the potential of how we can continue to not only brand these events, but help Federal Way's voice come out to share with the whole community that, you know, we really, you know, the centered on opportunity is sort of the umbrella, but we have these really cool verticals that we can communicate to the community through these events.
All right. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Honda.
Thanks, Ed. Thanks for applying for this again.
Yeah.
Is there a program you would like to see the Arts Commission do that they're not currently doing?
A program?
Or something to add to, to what they currently do?
Yeah, I think, I think that we could become a little bit of a hub network for the arts community in Federal Way. I think there's people that have different mediums and influences and backgrounds, whether it's performing arts or visual arts, or they run arts businesses in Federal Way. I think that we could create a little bit of a networking hub for those arts groups. So that if you're a printmaker, you know, on one side of town and then you're running a gallery on the other side of town and then you're running a ballet company here, we could start to, I think, implement events to connect those groups better. I just think in general, a lot of arts folks have their heads down because they're working on their art or they're working to become better. And sometimes we have to help each other, pull our head up and just look laterally to support each other as a community.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Tom. We'll talk about it at the end of this meeting and make an appointment most likely at the next meeting.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Kimberly, Kim Bowman.
Good evening, Council President Kochmar and members of council. My name is Kim Bowman and thank you for having me tonight. For the past five years, I've had the privilege of serving on the Arts Commission and would be very grateful to continue to, in service on the Arts Commission. My husband and I have called Federal Way home since 1989. We've chosen to stay here and raise our three sons in the Federal Way community. My background is, I moved around quite a bit as a child, being a military brat, so to speak. And so I had exposure to a lot of different cultures and quite a variety of, of, of things in my upbringing. But we moved up here to the Seattle area and I attended the University of Washington, attaining a Bachelor of Arts degree in general arts and also a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology. The past five years have been absolutely wonderful serving on the Arts Commission. When I came on board, it was the summer of 2020. So there were not a whole lot of activities and programs occurring at that time. So it was a good kind of gradual exposure into what we do around the city for arts events and programs. But since then, we've returned to a lot of the things that were pre-COVID and also added some other programs and events to our work plan. And some of those things that have been just absolutely wonderful to be involved in, for example, the Arts Alive program, also the Traffic Graphics Utility Box program, also spending time at the Arts Tent for the Red, White and Blues Festival, working with the children on projects, serving up hot cocoa and cookies at the tree lighting ceremony that the Arts Commission works with the city every year. Also, the Arts Explosion, which is newly added, has been an absolutely wonderful event that's seen a lot of growth in the last two years and we look forward to more growth for the Arts Explosion. Also, being involved in the administration of the Arts Commission Grants Program has been very rewarding, going through the interviews with all of the applicants for the grants that are administered by the Arts Commission. And along with more of these forward-facing events, I've routinely and actively participated in our monthly Arts Commission meetings and also the annual Arts Commission retreat. So in addition to these various things, I also have some professional experience in administration. So those are some of the skills that I can bring to the table. I'd like to say that I'm a practicing artist, but that's not my season of life at the moment. I look forward to being able to delve into that more so in the years to come. So if reappointed to the commission, I plan on continuing to do the work that I've been so, so fortunate to be able to do thus far.
Thank you very much, Kim. So council, any questions? McDaniel.
Yeah, I was lucky enough to walk into a couple of 8:00 AM meetings about the community center. So it makes it easy for me to go up and work out afterwards or right afterwards. And in the meetings, we have conversations sometimes about the work plan and some budget and stuff like that. Is there any areas that you think the arts program could use more funding in that would say would make a difference? Or do you think we're okay where we're at right now with the work plan that we have going on?
I don't think anyone ever, would ever say that they have enough funding. But I, I do believe that the amount of grant money that the Arts Commission has been allowed to, you know, give recommendations for administration over, it would be absolutely wonderful to see a bit of an increase in that. I don't think that's news to anyone here on the council. To my understanding, we've had the same amount of funding for quite a number of years. I want to say a couple of decades potentially. And when we are able to share that grant money or give the recommendation for how that grant money is shared with our local arts groups, that is quite a gift in support of the arts groups to, you know, that are here in Federal Way.
Do you think it would be able to, would we be able to use, if funds would actually increase sometime in the future, do you think that additional fund would actually have a multiplying effect by bringing in more artists into the federal area, making us more of that hub kind of concept for arts in the Northwest?
You know, I do. We had a couple of brand new artists apply to the grants program this year. Some very, one, one of the particular groups is very exciting, doing a lot of work with the youth in Federal Way. So definitely it increases visibility.
All right. Thank you.
Wow, no one else. Okay, Kim, thank you very much. We all know you, so thank you very much for applying. Kenny Byrne, is he here? All right, he's not on Zoom, is he, Kenny Byrne? All right. Okay, so now we're going to talk about who we're going to be able to appoint. The Arts Commission is gonna be a little more problematic because we have so many people who have applied and we only have a certain number of positions available.
May I ask a question of the city clerk?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Did Kenny say that he was not coming?
He did not, but he did confirm his attendance today.
Okay.
And if I can, for a point of clarification, there are currently two vacant seated positions as well as one alternate position. However, at the end of the year, December 31st of this year, position number one, two, and five will be expiring. So I believe the intent was to fill those positions as well.
Oh, I didn't understand that. Okay. So we actually have one, two, five. So that means we have one, two, three, four, five positions to fill and one alternate, correct?
May I ask another question of the city clerk? What is the attendance policy for a commissioner?
I'm unsure of that at this moment. I believe that, I think there's a number of, Ryan, do you, are you familiar?
I don't believe any of the, the commissions have an attendance policy. They're expected to attend, but I don't believe that there's any like built-in number. Like if you skip so many meetings, you're, you're out. I think it's, it's, depends on each, each.
Two?
No. They might have something in their bylaws, but it's,
Okay. So, Tom, you're saying two? Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear, that's their bylaws. It's not mine.
Right, the Arts Commission bylaws.
Council president, can I ask a question?
Councilmember Doby.
It seems like we have some openings now and we're gonna have to re-interview again because people aren't here. And I'm not gonna vote for anybody that's not here to put them on a commission. But why wouldn't we just appoint the ones that we have openings now and have another interview after the first of the year to fill the other ones? And that way, I mean, I'm not opposed to maybe filling the one that came tonight and interviewed that's gonna go over. But that might be my suggestion to make it simple.
Are you all, Councilmember Seth Silver-Dawson?
I support.
I,
Thank you.
No, I, personally, I think that we have some very qualified applicants here that could, we can use them to fill what we, what's available. I mean,
Thank you.
Well, down later, personally.
Thank you.
But the, the reason I say that, the ones that aren't here, their commission isn't over until December and we're in October, so we're actually, would be appointing somebody different in those positions before their term is up.
Okay.
And that's the only reason.
So maybe,
Any, any terms would be, new terms would be beginning January 1st for those anyway, right?
So, Council president, and if I may, I just wanted to clarify that there are only three meetings remaining for the year. So we would be, council would be appointing after the first of the year.
So we could just appoint the three now and then do the rest after the first year? Well, we wouldn't have to re-interview unless we wanted to because they've already, unless we wanted to. Okay.
So for understanding, are we, are we looking at appointing one through five tonight then?
No. No, she's, there's, if you look up there, it says position three is vacant, position four is vacant and alternate two is vacant.
Which ends at the end of the year.
And the rest would be at the end of the year.
So what, I mean, the position of a two expires October, unless you read November 31st or 25th. So they would only be there for three meetings?
Yes, and she's, they're suggesting that we interview after the first of the year for those that are expiring.
All right. So we would only be voting on three and four tonight?
Three, three, four and alternate two.
If, if we follow that though, with the, with the Human Services Commission, you know, some of the vacancies there, the people that interviewed tonight, their terms don't expire until January 31st. So clear a month later. so clear a month later. So, you know, it seems to me as though we're right now taking action of everything that's going to be taking place the next, you know, two and a half months.
Okay, well, let's, let's do this. Let's just talk about the human services at the moment and then go on to arts, okay?
Okay.
That's pretty easy.
Okay, with, so the Human Services Commission, it appears for the human services that we have position four and position five currently vacant and three alternate positions currently vacant. We've only had three people who have applied. So at this point, we're just going to be-
And, and two of those are reappointments.
And two of them are reappointments. Correct. There are already seven and eight, but did you want to put them in position four and five? Or do we want to leave them in seven? I mean, literally-
We'll leave it as-
Leave them in seven and keep position four and five vacant.
And Ashley can go in position four.
And Ashley, she's, she wants Ashley in position four.
Yeah.
Which is now currently vacant. Who, who else wants?
I, I think that's the thing to do, is to reappoint them to their current positions. Because those current positions will, it'll be three years from-
Okay.
From when they expire.
Okay, so you, we're going to have Donna in, in position seven, Betty in position eight, and we're going to have Ashley. She is suggesting Ashley in position four.
Yeah.
Y'all okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
And are we interviewing Mr. Booker on, at the next meeting?
Yes, that is-
Karen Brigato for the Arts Commission?
That's correct.
So then we still have position five available and three alternates, correct?
Right.
And position number nine, as of January 31st.
Yeah.
Well, that's going to make it, I mean, we're good. I think we've got it at the moment, so let's, thank you. We'll, we'll let you handle position nine, putting it in with everybody else. Okay, so we've got, let's reiterate. We've got Donna in seven, Betty in eight, and Ashley in four, correct? We're all okay with that. So that's all we're going to do right now, because those, those are the ones we have. The rest we'll talk about after November 18th, when Booker and Karen can interview. All right, so let's go on to Arts Commission. Now, I'm, we've had, we have three vacancies, current vacancies, position three and four, and alternate two. Those are the three current vacancies. However, which are the ones that, we're not going to talk about the ones to interview after the first of the year then? Are we just going to fill the three vacancies at the moment?
Well, we were to interview Kenny. He's not here with no explanation why.
And, and so we won't, it looks like we should drop him because he's, he hasn't been at, I mean-
He's missed six.
Tell me what you want to do with Kenny first. So we have a-
We have an open seat in my mind.
What was the question?
Well, Kenny Byrne didn't come. He hasn't been showing up at the meetings.
I'm not voting for anybody that's not here tonight.
Okay, so we're going to leave Kenny Byrne off period because he hasn't shown up at the meetings.
Okay, so we have three openings now for voting members so far?
Correct. Well, we, two voting members and one alternate currently.
But if you took-
Kenny would be an open seat.
If you take Kenny Byrne off, you have three.
Yeah, I would move Tom Bristol into a voting position.
Yep.
And you want to put him in three?
Yep.
Bristol in three? Okay, so who do we want for position four? Let's see, we've got, Dan Hirschman is a person who's re, well, Kim Bowman is current, and she is reapplying.
Right, I, she's great.
Kim Bowman for four. Y'all okay with Bowman for four? Why not just keep her, she's in position one now, just keep her in that same position, reappoint her to the same position? Okay, we're going to have-
I agree with that.
All right, we're, so we're, we're reappointing, can, just want to make sure we're keeping track. So, so Kim and Tom are taken care of. So who do you want for position four? We've got Hirschman, Katie.
I like Angel, Angelia or-
Angelica?
Juarez. I thought she had a lot of-
Angelique Juarez, I think she's-
I thought she would be a great addition.
Okay, you have two for, for Angelica. Councilmember Tran, any question, any, anything that you like?
Angelica.
Angelica, three for Angelica. Who's here?
Angelica.
Angelica, anybody else? Okay, Angelica is number four.
And I'll recommend Katie for alternate one, since we're moving Tom out.
We're good with Katie for vacant position alternate, which is replacing Bristol.
I would recommend Daniel.
Who's Daniel? Dan Hirschman for two? Position alternate two, yes.
I think he brings a lot of value. Did we appoint him somewhere?
Yeah, position two, position two, Dan Hirschman.
For alternate number two?
No, not, not alternate two.
Kenny, you're replacing Kenny. Okay, Hirschman for-
Okay.
All right, now we've got one position left that we can vacate, see that we can still appoint. No, wait, wait, wait.
Alex. Alex.
Well, we've got, we've got to consider that we're going to look at Karen and, let's see.
This makes it difficult. If we hold a seat open for Karen, and she's the only one interviewing for the seat, it's like you've already given the seat up. It's not even-
All right, so you all tell me what you want to do.
I think we have some very qualified candidates right now.
All right, so go ahead, Councilmember Walsh. Who would you like for vacancy alternate number two?
So may I say something? Karen had a long, well-planned vacation and did not know about this interview until last week and could not cancel her vacation to be here. I wouldn't punish her. She's been a, she's chair of the commission. She's done great work on the commission. I wouldn't punish her for not being here.
I, I'm, I'm concerned that there's, there's a lot of conflict between staff and Karen also. And I don't think it's the, I think we need to take the, take the staff into consideration. They're, they're hardworking, and, and I think that we definitely need to take that into consideration also.
Who's left?
Who's left, we have left is-
Council President, could you go over what's, who's been appointed and what positions we have right now?
Right now, we've got Kimberly Bowman for position one, Hirschman for position two, Bristol for position, Tom Bristol for position three, Angelica for position four.
I'd say Katie Astron for position five.
We've got Katie down at alternate number one, which is what-
I'll take that up and move up to five.
I'd say move her up to five.
Katie for number five. If you're all okay with Katie for number five? Okay, so now we have two alternates available and the people still available. Let's see, Alexander, Kenny is off the-
I'd say Alex is an alternate.
Do you want Alex for alternate number two? We have, we have alternate one and alternate two available.
I'd say Alex is alternate one. I mean, with his future career and stuff, I mean, that expires, I mean-
All right. Okay, so let me go over it one more time. Okay, because we're getting short here. Kimberly Bowen, number one, Hirschman, number two, Bristol, number three, Angelica, four, Katie, five. Six remains, Cindy Dussett, Vicki is number seven, Janine, Janine Barber, eight. Nine remains the same. Alternate number one is Alex, and we still have alternate two vacant.
I don't think that what we just did was appropriate.
I think, I appreciate that. Anybody else down there want, have anything to say? Councilmember Seth Swetoson?
Could you repeat what's what now? I'm totally lost.
Okay, let me go over, okay, real quick. Okay, let's go down the list. Position one is Kimberly Bowman. Position two is Hirschman. Position three is Bristol. Position four is Angelica. Position five is Katie. Six remains the same. Seven, same. Eight, same. Nine, same. Alternate one, Alex, and we still have vacant alternate two.
Anybody have one more interview?
We need to be able to have people on commissions that can represent their views without being afraid of not being reappointed. And I think that's what we just did.
I have a question with Karen, Karen's though. It doesn't end until December regardless, so we can't take her off?
No.
No.
It wouldn't start until-
No, but she's applied to be reappointed. She's on vacation. She can't be here because of that.
So why can't we leave that open until she shows up, until she comes back?
So, and I hear you. So that's this side, this side, yes, sir?
I'm, I'm a big one for change sometimes, but I have to agree with Lydia and Susan. I don't think it's right to, I like to say, I won't vote for somebody who's not here interviewing.
Okay.
But if they're not here and they're on the commission, I think you at least have to give them a chance to interview.
Okay, so does this, this sounds like we have four for Karen remaining in position five at the moment. Okay, and so that puts us with, a vacant, that gives us Katie down at alternate two, correct?
And that-
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, y'all okay? We're good?
So it gets extended automatically?
Yeah, well, she's not up yet, not till December 31st.
And Alex is alternate one?
We've got Alex's one and Katie's two. They're both the same, so, well, actually, Katie is 2025. So let's talk about that. Which one do you want for one and which one do you want for two? We've got Alex and Katie.
Does that mean whoever we stick into is done in December and has to reapply for another cycle?
No, it gets extended, right?
So the, the new term would begin, and it would expire in 28.
So we're not, we're not, the 20, the 25 doesn't mean anything that we're seeing on the paper right now?
It's really 2028.
And then potentially someone steps out. Either one of those had a potential stepping up in that timeframe?
I'm sorry.
I was saying that if we, we select Alex and we select Katie to go into alternative one and two, terms end in 26 and 28. At any given time, if a slot opens up, they can come in like Tom did today and move up to a voting position. Okay.
Okay, I think we're good. Are we good? Anybody okay? Well, thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 6:22, and we will start our next meeting at 6:30 PM.